I take, when you go into the emergency room.
Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on November 21st, 2017. I'd like to ask everyone to please take a moment to silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Mayor Pro Tem Cee Lo Possett.
We bow our heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for a wonderful day today. We ask that you go around the hospital and touch Councilman Ward with your healing hands. We ask you to bless this community, bless this council, bless employees of this city. Give them the grace and wisdom to lead on like you would want us to lead. We ask all these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
I have a special proclamation this evening. This time, I'd like to recognize Burlington Downtown Corporation Director Jessica Pasion and Sarah Beth Hardy. All right. If you'd like to say a couple of words about Small Business Saturday.
So we'd like to invite, I'm Jessica Pasion, the Executive Director of the Burlington Downtown Corporation, and we'd like to invite everyone to celebrate Small Business Saturday this weekend. The Historic Depot will be home to our Welcome Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., where we're going to offer free gift wrapping, shopping coats for folks, and shopping guides for downtown. Members, our merchants participating in Small Business Saturday will be, their storefronts will be adorned with some balloons, so you guys know the folks that are participating in that event. And at 1:30, we will be welcoming a new merchant to our district, Needles and Threads. We will be hosting a red carpet rollout at 1:30 p.m., and we ask that you all come. They're located at 239 East Front Street. Thank you.
On behalf of the City Council and Downtown Corp., we'd like to proclaim Small Business Saturday for this Saturday, November 25th, 2017, whereas the City of Burlington celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to the local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million businesses in the United States, which represents 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, and are responsible for 63% of new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses account for over 49% of all businesses with employees in the United States. And whereas 89% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. And whereas 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support small businesses that they value in their communities. And whereas the City of Burlington supports our local businesses because they create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Ian Baltudis, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Burlington, North Carolina, who hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday in Burlington, and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll see you downtown.
Yes, please do. Thank you, guys.
At this time, we recognize our City Clerk Renee Ward.
Members of council, my responsibility to moderate your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. This time, I ask of any potential conflicts concerned to not subject.
Before council, minutes from November 7th, 2017, City Council meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
We approve the minutes.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, minutes have been approved. Before council is the agenda, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye. All those opposed, agenda's been adopted. The next item is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance approving the following Traffic Commission recommendations: Request to prohibit parking on the west side of Kitchen Street from a point 64 feet northwest from the intersection of South Main Street and Kitchen Street to a point 107 feet northwest from the same. To request an install, a raised crosswalk on Overbrook Road near the intersection of East Kitchen Street. Request to reduce the speed limit on Graham Street between South Beaumont Avenue and Hanover Road from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. Request to install a mid-block crosswalk on Graham Street approximately 200 feet north of the intersection of Graham Street and Hanover Road. And request to install a stop sign on Huntington Court at the intersection of Huntington Road and Huntington Court. Item B has been removed from the agenda by request of the City Manager. Item C, to declare the Burlington Fire Department's 1995 KME fire truck as surplus property and to adopt a resolution authorizing the donation of the latter truck to our sister city in Soladon, Mexico pursuant to NC General Statute Section 160A-28. Item D, temporarily close the following streets on Friday, November 8th, 2017, for the holiday magic Dickens Christmas downtown special event from 2:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. The details of those street closures are spelled out in your agenda. Item E, budget amendment 2018-20, CEBG budget modifications, those details are also spelled out in your agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda is approved. We have two public hearings scheduled for this evening. Public hearing number one, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider the application to rezone from R-15 residential district to CR conditional residential district for the use of 138-unit senior apartment complex. The properties are located on the north side of Old St. Mark's Church Road and the east side of University Drive, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 107161, 1124171, and 112472. At this time, council recognizes Director of Planning Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This rezoning request comes to you with the recommendation of planning staff and the Technical Review Committee. The Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending the request to council unanimously. The Commission recommended approval based upon consistency with the City of Burlington Comprehensive Land Use Plan, finding the request consistent in that the plan calls for commercial uses and multifamily developments are allowed in commercial zoning. Thus, this action is reasonable and in the public interest. There were no comments from the public on this matter at that meeting. There is an existing multifamily property that is adjacent to this request, and on the map, it is right here. It is a desirable location for a senior apartment complex, as the applicant will review with council. Mr. Brent Narkowitz is here to explain the rezoning and the conditions requested.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate the time. First off, your staff here in Burlington is, I travel the country doing this all over the place, and your staff has just been fantastic to work with. They do a lot of the heavy lifting for us and present the project in a way that everybody can understand it. So my name's Brent Narkowitz. I'm the Development Director for Calamar, and we are here requesting this zone change from R-15 to the conditional zoning. And I'll tell you a little bit about who we are briefly, and then I'll just tell you a little bit about the project, and we'll be happy to answer any of your questions. So Calamar is a real estate development firm. We build a number of things. We build hotels, we build commercial buildings, industrial buildings across the country. But the thing that we build the most of, and that is our own portfolio, is our senior housing product. So while we build other buildings for third parties, this is a product that we build, we would be the owners and operators of this product. So it would be our employees that would be managing it, and maintenance staff, and things of that nature. We have, we're located out of Weedfield, New York, which is about 30 miles north of Buffalo. That's where our main office is. We have an office in New England, in North Andover, Massachusetts. We have an office in Omaha, Nebraska. And we are hoping very soon to open up an office in North Carolina, and that's why we're here. We're here because this product that we build is, it's age-restricted. Our CEO, again, we've been around for 25 years. About 17 years ago, he saw a need for this type of housing opportunity throughout the community. We have our in-house marketing and research people. We also hire a national marketing and research firm that looks for areas of the country that our type of housing product could be used in. So we don't come to Burlington, North Carolina simply because there was a piece of land that could fit our product. We come here because we've done some extensive research and demographics and whatnot, and we think there's a need for our type of housing product here. We have 17 facilities across the country right now. This would be our 18th facility, and it would be our first one in North and South Carolina, where we're looking. And you can see from the plan up there, that H pattern that you see that the building is in is very typical of what we build. We try to keep that pretty much our model. We modify it based on topography and site conditions and whatnot. But the reason we do that is because there's a central entrance in the middle of the spine of the H, and that's where our manager's office is, some mechanical rooms, and our large community spaces, and outrooms that are used for libraries and communal meeting and things like that. There's elevators where the spine hits each portion, each one of the legs, there's an elevator there. So this pattern works out well for us to give our tenants the least amount of distance that they have to travel to get outside to their vehicles or to our common spaces, and just works efficiently for us. It's a three-story building. It's a wood structure, asphalt shingles, vinyl siding. We do kind of a two-tone siding, and we add cedar impressions to it to give it architectural character. All units have either an at-grade patio or an outside deck, depending on the floor that you're on. The associated parking you see in the front and on the sides is meeting requirements. We had asked the Planning Commission, and I think it's part of their favorable recommendation to you, for a waiver from 1.5 to 1.25 parking spaces. And in actuality, that's something that, we're probably going to end up somewhere in the middle. There is some topography on the site that we're dealing with, so my facilities director would like to get as close to 1.5 as possible, but based on topography, we may reduce it. But it certainly wouldn't be reduced to anything less than 1.25. On the right, on the far, on the east and west, or as you're looking at the plan, the far right and the far left, we do offer single-story detached garages as well, and those are made available to our tenants if they choose. So that's essentially our facility. It's very common to what we've built, with what we've built elsewhere. Just to give you some very quick numbers about coming to a community again, ideally, we look for a number of households within our market area that have somebody, at least one person in the household who is 62 or greater. Typically, we've done communities where the market area could be anywhere from five to seven miles around the actual site. Typically, we've gone into communities where we've had as little as 5,000 or 6,000 or 7,000 homes within that market area that had at least one person that was aged 62 or greater. Burlington came in at about 11,000. So this is a very good market for us, and it also shows that the market area around Burlington, that there's a need for our type of housing. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from the board or staff. One more thing, we did send out letters to immediate abutters, wanted to get their, deal with any of their concerns if they had any, or answer any of their questions. I did get some phone calls from two immediate abutters. I don't know if they're here this evening, but I'm confident in telling you that they generally both spoke favorable of the project. They wanted to see what the ultimate design would be, would see the plans when they got to the planning department, but they generally spoke favorably of it, asked me some questions about what we were doing, and I responded. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
The residence that's on that road is next to this, is that right? You're not raising a house in order to build this?
No, we are. The residence, there's a single-family dwelling currently on the property, and that would be raised. It's owned by the property owner that we're buying the property from.
Any other questions from council? We'll let you have a chance to answer any questions after the public hearing. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Do I hear a motion from council to close the public hearing?
Make a motion. Will we close the public hearing?
Second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is closed. Any further questions from council, or do I hear a motion?
Based on TRC staff recommendation and planning and zoning, I'd make a motion that we approve the item. Based upon the consistency with the City of Burlington's Comprehensive Land Use Plan, that the request is consistent and that the Comprehensive Plan calls for commercial uses and multifamily developments that are allowed in commercial. Thus, this action is reasonable and in the public interest for that location.
Any question? Second. Any questions regarding the motion and statement of consistency? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Narkowitz.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Item two on our agenda for public hearings, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone from R-15 and R-9 residential district to CR conditional residential district for the use of a 42-unit townhome development. The property is located at 2945 Alamance Road, as referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 114544. This time, council recognizes Director of Planning Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This rezoning request comes to you with the recommendation of planning staff and the Technical Review Committee. Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending this request to council by a vote of four to three. Due to concerns raised at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Mr. Greg Garrett is here to request a continuance.
Mr. Garrett.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Greg Garrett. I work for Sugar at Homes, and we've been working very diligently on this project. However, I am, as you know from the letter I sent you last week, that I am asking for a continuance to work through a few more issues with the plan that was approved at TRC, and wanted to have time to make some adjustments to that TRC-approved plan. So respectfully request that from each of you.
By show of hands, is anyone here to speak on this item? Okay. All right. Will council like us to begin a public hearing and continue it, or?
If Mr. Mayor, you didn't have to, you don't have, if you're going to continue the public hearing, you continue at this point in time. You don't take comments because he's going to come back with something different. So it would be appropriate, if the council is going to entertain continuing this matter, to continue it at this point in time in the meeting to a date certain.
And the date that you would like to continue this to again is?
January the 14th or 16th. Thank you. I was going to ask for a little help on that.
Okay. And you will be available to residents to provide more information as the plan develops?
That's correct.
And so I'd ask residents, please meet Mr. Garrett before you leave, and make sure he has your contact information, so that you can be in communication as he finalizes those plans prior to the January 16th meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Do I hear a motion from council to continue this item?
I'd make a motion. We continue this item to January 16th.
Second. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask a question. We have all met with Mr. Garrett.
Okay.
We just had a meeting with Mr. Garrett last week, twice. So I just wanted to point that out, and we do know him already.
Yeah. Well, and so what council had stated is that the plans presented in the agenda packet are not the finalized plans? So some of your feedback may not have been incorporated into those plans yet? And so council was basically giving opportunity for him to finalize those plans, get your final review of it prior to the actual approval. Is that? And then for you to be able to provide any feedback at a public hearing on January 16th on the finalized plans as opposed to plans that are going to change?
We understand.
Okay.
We understand. It's been going on since July.
Okay. Let's, understand the process, and we appreciate, we appreciate the process. We understand that it progresses along, and we appreciate that there is a two-way dialogue.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any questions regarding the motion to continue? We did hear a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. That concludes business for the council meeting. There were no public comments signed up. We do have city council comments. Do I hear any city council comments?
Mayor, I have a couple of comments, if I can, real quick. Since our last meeting, I did want to make a comment. It's been, it's been in the newspapers, so everybody's probably had a chance to read it, but I just thought it was worthy of council comments, too, that the jobs for North Carolina graduates event at Williams High School was a pretty phenomenal activity. For those that were there, Governor Cooper was there. I was able to attend, and Representative Steve Ross was there as well. But basically, it's a local entity for jobs for graduates across America, and just really honored that Williams was chosen. They've done a wonderful job over there. Charlie Jones, Chuck Jones is the teacher with that program, and my hat goes off to them. You know, that's, education is certainly a part of our comprehensive plan, and seeing activities like that in our city schools is extremely important, and they did a class act job that day, everybody over there. So I just want to tip my hat to them. And then today, we had the ribbon cutting for the Wayfinding signage product. I was not able to attend, but oftentimes, we get credit for various things across town, being city government, city council, but I wanted to really say a special thank you to Senator Rick Gunn and Representative Steve Ross, because without them, that money would not have happened. And I'd like to take the credit for it, and this council will take the credit for it, but it was not us. And that $95,000 came from those guys, 43 signs across the city. If you've seen them, they're beautiful, and they'll be there for a long time. So that is the, a beauty of having dialogue and relationships with your representatives in Raleigh, and the extension of what that can mean, and certainly what it even means to downtown and across the city in general. So if you see them, or if you can take time to drop a note to them, we would greatly appreciate it, because we like to get the next bucket of money that they want to send our way.
We appreciate having the both in downtown for that ribbon cutting, and another ribbon cutting over at the Boys and Girls Club, which was another project supported by those dollars. So, council member Hayes?
Yes. I want to address the youth violence that we've seen in Burlington. I know that we're all concerned about this, and that our police department has done an amazing job of finding and arresting many of the people involved, some of whom are as young as 16 years old. And I know this is a trend in many more places than our city. This is not, we're not the only one in this, but I think that it might be time for this council to try to understand what is happening, what may be the underlying factors that are producing this kind of prime. There are many groups working in our city to address separate parts of what they see as problems in our community. Our police department certainly is very active in this, the United Way, Alamance Achieves, the school system, Alamance Community College. And some of us have been working in one of the neighborhoods where this has been happening, but it's happening in more than one neighborhood. And we seem to have a terrible tragedy happen, and then we try to forget about it, but it happens again. And so I'm asking this council if we would consider forming a task force to look at youth violence, and what are the reasons that this has begun and is happening this way? And I want us to have a conversation about this. I bring it up intentionally while Cee Lo is still here, because I very much like him to be involved in this. He would be invaluable to this conversation, but I would like to include the youth, as well as parents and other people in the community who want to look at the big picture of this and try to understand what are the underlying factors, what's happening in our community. I'm not sure that, I expect that we could come up with all of the answers, but I think other communities have been working on this and are trying to figure it out themselves. And it's just, it's gone week after week, seeing different kinds of crimes reported in the newspaper, and I just have felt a great frustration, as I'm sure all of you have. And I feel as though it's time for us to call for something to start in terms of a conversation about that. So I would like to bring this, have something come before us on the work session in December to help us have this discussion and figure out how we could go about putting together a group of people who would be willing to talk about this and try to come up with some ideas for our community.
Do you see this task force being City of Burlington, something we're doing locally, or could we expand it to be county-wide? Because there's other municipalities that are feeling the same thing within our county. And if we utilize all of our resources and combine all of the knowledge throughout the county, then I think we're, it would look more broad and inclusive across the board. I'd like to see as if we're going to do this, look at it being county-wide.
Well, I certainly think that that could be under discussion. I just see my responsibility from the charter is that we're looking at the health and protection of our own community. If others would like to be a part of that, that could certainly come into the discussion.
She's heard my name.
I said your name. I'm not letting you off the hook.
Yeah, I don't mind at all. I don't mind at all. The thing that I consider about our city is, we have so many organizations that are trying to do the same thing, and it seems like that nobody's accomplishing anything by so many groups being out there. And to create a task force, maybe, that we can do that, that we can pull the leaders from the communities to assist with this, would be something ideal, I think, that we would do, because, you know, I'm in the community, and I hear what they're saying, and a lot of it, I don't believe, because they said there are no jobs. There are jobs, you just got to get off your butt and go look for a job. There are jobs here. We've got to do that. That's what they got to do. They got to get them out of the street, give them something to look forward to. That's my take on this, you know? Stop the shooting. As I always say, if you see something, say something. We've got to emphasize that, to make them really start anticipating and see something, say something. It's just important to me to be part of that community, not only the black community, but the whole entire community, because I don't want to distinguish whether this is black community, but there's a lot of us happening in the black community, but there's other crimes happening in the white community as well. And we have to look at both aspects of that to assist these young people that are doing these terrible crimes, especially with the shooting in the homes, and it's so disappointing to see people do that. And chasing with the rest of the young man yesterday, I think, that's a start. People are saying something. I'm sure somebody said something to get that guy arrested. But I just feel like that we've just got, we've got to narrow some of these groups down. We've just got too many little groups out here. And if we can do that, I think we'll be on the right road to soften some of these issues that we have here.
I don't, you know, there may be jobs, whether the people can fill the jobs, I don't know whether that's what it's about. I don't want to presume what it's about. I'm sure that's one of the factors.
Yeah, definitely.
And you're right, that there are lots of groups doing different things. That's what I'm hoping this would do, is bring those people together, find out where the commonality is, and where the emphasis should be. That's what we would figure out, but everybody is working on their own, and it just occurred to me that I, that as a community... to me that I, that as a community, we need to look at, address this, because this is not the Burlington that I know. It's not the Burlington that we want it to be, and it's going to begin, it is affecting more and more families, and it is a brutal thing to have to go through. And we've talked to the mothers of the children who have been killed, and it's devastating, and it changes their lives, and I just don't want this to happen anymore. So what is it that we, how can we address it? That's what I'm asking. It's not your zoning and, you know, the kinds of things that we typically were worried about, but it's, I think it's important for us to look at the big picture on this.
I agree.
Is it okay for, with it, sort of by consensus, that we talk about this at the work session in December?
Yeah. So it'll be on December 4th's work session.
Is that? I don't know what the work session agenda is already included. Do we have room for?
Yes, sir. I do.
And if you have anything to suggest about that, please speak to me or to Harden, and we'll figure out a way to present that.
Thank you.
Just want to remind folks about a couple upcoming events. City offices will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week, the 23rd and 24th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. The link transit buses will not run on Thanksgiving on Thursday, but they will resume on Friday, the 24th. And then we have the Dickens Holiday Magic Event coming to downtown, as we approved on our consent agenda. That is December 8th, and we welcome everybody to come down and check out all the festivities. There's real snow downtown, there's a lot of wonderful events, so we hope to see lots of folks out there. Do I hear any further council comments? Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Chief Smythe if he'll come forward. We want to recognize, we sent out a press release today, but we want to recognize the Burlington Police Department. This week, they won the Global Kindness, global? Gosh, no. Global Kindness Challenge. And Chief's going to share just a couple of words about that, but we're pretty excited about that. It was an international competition.
Yeah, it's amazing. So a number of months ago, we hired Meredith DiMatina as our Crime Analysis Unit Supervisor, and she was the lever for this, that knew about it, polled other employees for their participation, and about 15 or 16 people jumped on board and said they wanted to do it. So it's, yeah, the Global Kindness Ninja Challenge, and they had a list of 100 activities, and you had to video or film or take pictures of the things that you did for proof and send them in, and we did that. And there were over 9,000 participants from 16 different countries that participated in this, and it's just amazing to think that our police department won the top award for the highest points for 16 countries.
Wow.
And we did chalk notes on sidewalks, and sent cards to senior citizens who were lonely in a retirement home, talked to people on the sidewalk, a host of things that I can't even begin to explain over a course of a seven-day period, documented those, and won this award. So 16 countries were involved, and we won. And we're the police department, right? So I just wanted to kind of shout that out a little bit, about how amazing the employees are in the Burlington Police Department, and we really owe that to you all, right? You fund us and support our training and hiring and all those things that we do, and so credit to you all and the citizens that support us for just a remarkable token of recognition for the Burlington Police Department. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Congratulations. It was fun to see the officers out.
Yeah, they had a good time doing it. So it was a win-win. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, manager. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? City council is adjourned.